Yes, Matt.
We can hear you, councilors. Councilor Staplers, can you hear us?
Loud and clear, sir.
Great, thank you. All right, council staff, ladies and gentlemen of the public, I'd like to reconvene this special council meeting, public hearing of the OCP Amendment Bylaw 2405 and Zoning Amendment Bylaw, or pardon me, Zoning Bylaw 2406. We started this meeting at 10:00 AM this morning and recessed until now. So before I start with the public hearing part, I'm going to ask Mr. Simon to just give us a brief overview before we carry on.
Thank you, your worship. I can give a really high-level presentation that will just give a summary of some of the major changes that are included within zoning by law number 2406. So one of the big changes with this by law comes to density within our residential areas. So we had to change the by law to allow up to four units per lot within low-density residential areas in accordance with requirements from provincial legislation. So the province has passed legislation that required the city to amend its by law to allow four units per lot, but we still get to control the development form that that takes. So what this zoning by law proposes is to allow those four units per lot in no more than two buildings. So it could allow for multiple configurations without allowing for four large, single-family dwellings on one lot. So you might have two duplexes, you might have a triplex and a garden suite, a lot of different configurations to still accommodate some diversity within our housing typology. One of the other big changes with respect to residential density that's proposed in this by law is changing the way we calculate density within our medium and high-density zones. Currently, within the zoning by law, it regulates it on what planners will refer to as a units-per-hector basis. So what this means is, on a given size of land, you're allowed X amount of units. And what this does is it incentivizes individuals to construct a larger or a smaller quantity of larger units, whereas we're proposing to switch that to what's called a floor-area-ratio calculation. Floor-area ratio calculation, it is a little bit more technical, so there's a little bit more nuance to it, and it does require a little bit of arithmetic, but essentially, you can think of it as, on a lot, if someone has a 1.0 floor-area ratio and they cover 100% of that lot, they could build a one-story building. If someone has a 1.0 floor-area ratio and they cover half the lot, they could build a two-story building. If they cover 25% of the lot, they could cover, they could build a four-story building. So it's not regulating the number of units, and what this does is it incentivizes the creation of a larger quantity of smaller units. So this is done in an effort to try and produce some affordability on the market housing side. Some of the other changes come to the actual mapping within the zoning by law, so every property is assigned a zone within the city. We didn't do a whole lot of what we call pre-zoning, so you upzone a property so that they can do, you know, a higher form of development, but there were some areas that we did want to make notice so that the public and the community is informed. There was 12 lots along Victoria Road that were changed to mixed use, specifically the MU4 zone, or sorry, the MU3 zone. This is our mixed-use scenic corridor zone. It's really comparable to our existing C6 Victoria Road commercial corridor zone, and the reason why these 12 lots were recommended to be pre-zoned is so that we have consistent zoning along the Victoria Road commercial corridor. There is also 18 lots within Central Revelstoke that were proposed to receive a small-lot residential zone, and what this would do is allow them to build a small, single-family dwelling or a small duplex without any variances for setbacks and lot coverage. So this applies to 18 lots that are those small, narrow lots between 25 and 35 feet usually. City has received variance applications for these in the past. This would allow those to proceed without having to get a variance. We also changed the zoning along West Side Road, Highway 23 North, as well as the Big Eddy. There's a lot of historic zoning there that's called the Rural Residential 60-Hector District Zone. It was zoning that was incorporated from the CSRD when those lands were annexed back in the 80s into city limits. It allows for a lot of heavy industrial uses and uses that the community typically wouldn't see as compatible within these sensitive environmental areas. So it's proposed to change the zoning in a lot of these areas to what we call the E1 Zone, which is environmental and rural recreation. So it significantly limits the form of development. There's still some minor forms of private development, small campgrounds, for example, outdoor recreation uses, but it's not allowing for any heavy industrial uses as the current by law allows for. Some of the other changes with respect to residential density and uses within residentially zoned properties, we've reduced the setbacks within standard residential zones, increased lot coverage, and reduced minimum lot sizes. This is all in an effort to try and support infill residential development that can utilize our existing servicing system, our existing transportation networks, to try and see higher and better use of the land within the city and increase density in a thoughtful and well-integrated way. So some of the other changes involve looking at all the permitted uses within a zoning by law. So the big thing a zoning by law does is it regulates what uses you can do on a certain property, given its zoning, and how much of that use, i.e. the density, that you can do under that zoning. So all uses that were contained within the existing zoning by law have been reviewed. Some of them have been removed, some of them have been consolidated, and Talk Revelstoke has an outline that shows how all these uses have changed and the rationale outlining why they have changed. We started with just about 200 uses and we ended up with 100 uses. This was a major housekeeping exercise, and to give you guys an example of what we're talking about here, the city zoning by law had about five uses that were related to liquor store. They all meant liquor store, but they were all written differently. We don't need five ways to describe a liquor store in Revelstoke. We can have one use to describe that. So that just gives you a little bit of insight into some of the analysis that staff had undertaken to kind of get to where we are with respect to the permitted uses in the zoning by law. One of the other key things is, right now, within the zoning by law, there's a lot of permitted uses that don't have a corresponding definition. This creates ambiguity for what the use actually entails and uncertainty for the community, as well as any developer who's looking to undertake that use. It also raises the potential for inconsistent interpretation and application of the by law over the years. So every single use that's listed in the by law now has a corresponding definition to reduce that inconsistency in interpretation. We also increased the permitted uses that are available in every zone within the city. So it doesn't matter if it's commercial, industrial, residential, institutional. These are a list of permitted uses that you can do anywhere in the city. So things like solar energy generation, public art, community gardens, beekeeping, as well as childcare are all permitted uses now in every zone in the city to try and incentivize these types of uses throughout the community. Some of the other things that we looked at were updating the development regulations. So we did increase building heights in medium and high-density zones. Essentially, within a medium-density zone, the building heights have been changed so that you could build a four-story building, and within a high-density zone, the building heights are changed so that you could build a six-story building. Critically important with this zoning by law update, we aren't proposing any properties within the city to receive the high-density zoning. Those properties would have to go through for someone that wants to build a six-story building, except for those that are within what we call comprehensive development zones, so site-specific zones, but if you wanted to do a standard, high-density zone, you would need to rezone and likely do an official community plan amendment, which would trigger a public hearing so that the community can be more involved in that process. We also allowed for greater flexibility for things like carports, so creating allowances for those to be located within the front yard setback area, greenhouses as well, as well as provisions for residing within a recreational vehicle while you have a house that's under construction. So that last one, we would allow you to reside within an RV for a period of one year while you are constructing a house on an empty lot. We have new landscaping provisions that would be applicable for all multi-unit residential, commercial, and industrial development within the community. Currently, we have scattered landscaping regulations that only apply to certain forms of development. This is a more robust set of regulations that would be more consistently applied to new development. We've updated regulations for accessory buildings, accessory dwelling units, and provided clarification for shipping containers, which can be a contentious issue within the community. And then we have also updated regulations pertaining to home-based businesses to try and promote a little bit more flexibility with people that are operating home-based businesses in the community while ensuring that we're still maintaining that traditional residential character. Always a fun one. Parking regulations have been updated with this zoning by law, so we require for any multi-unit development. Historically, it's been between one and a half and two parking spaces per dwelling unit. We've landed on 1.5 spaces for all multi-unit dwellings being required per dwelling unit. We've clarified that for rowhouse dwellings, so you can think of kind of vertically separated by party wall, rowhouse dwelling units. No visitor or accessible parking is required for these. We've had confusion in the past where someone with a private driveway is trying to build up to an accessible standard, which is really only typical for a communal parking lot. We've clarified that for accessory dwelling units, so things like secondary suites, garden suites, carriage suites. No parking is required if this unit is 29 square meters or less, which is about 310 square feet. So that's trying to incentivize the creation of what we would call micro-suites. So you know, a rowhouse maybe has a 300-square-foot micro-suite within it where you wouldn't need to provide parking for that. We have new minimum requirements for bicycle parking. That would be for both visitor parking for bicycles, so temporary spots out front of a building where you have to have visitor parking for bicycles, as well as permanent storage spaces for bicycle parking within new buildings. We have greater allowances for shared parking for commercial and industrial uses. We've updated what we call parking bonusing regulations, so if you're within an area of the city that is deemed to be more walkable, you don't have to provide as much parking with new multi-unit residential development. So this would be for those developments that are within 300 meters, measured by radius from lot line to lot line, of a grocery store as well as a bus stop. We've included provisions that allow for shared parking for restaurants and tourist accommodation use, so you can think of a hotel with a restaurant in it, or a hotel with a restaurant on the ground floor within the downtown or downtown fringe area. We've proposed that those uses can share parking, and we've also clarified loading requirements to propose that no loading requirements are required within the downtown or downtown fringe area, given that there are laneways that are currently and have historically been used for loading. So with this zoning by law, an official community plan amendment is needed. That is by law 2405. And the reason, in a nutshell, why the OCP by law needs to be amended is the OCP contains a map called the Land Use Strategy Map. That land use strategy at a high level identifies here, here's where we want to see high-density residential, here's where we want to see commercial, industrial, and we're trying to get that map more aligned with the zoning by law map. The zoning map tells you on the ground, here's the nitty-gritty regulations for developing under one of these two high-density zones. The OCP is that high-level vision map. Here's our high-density areas, here's our low-density areas. So we're trying to get those maps in greater alignment. The OCP amendment impacts about 51 properties or groups of properties, so it's about 200 individual titled lots. A lot of this would be considered housekeeping, again, to get those maps in greater alignment, but Talk Revelstoke, for those that are interested, has been updated. You'll see it's been on there for three, four weeks now, five weeks, with a comprehensive list, including a map outlining the properties that are receiving an OCP amendment and the rationale to support that OCP amendment. I'll conclude with just a general overview of the engagement stats related to this project. So we've been at this for about two years now. A lot of opportunity for the public to provide feedback at various stages of the project, and in total, we have had about 110 active participants. So that includes those that attended meetings, filled out surveys, provided written feedback, attended coffee chats, et cetera. We had 35 individuals at least view information on Talk Revelstoke, so they clicked on a document and read through it. We sent 5,600 letters to all landowners back in March 2024 to advise them of the project. We had hit a key milestone at that point, so we wanted the community to be aware. So everyone has been informed of this project. We've had 10 separate stakeholder groups engaged on the project, so for example, the Chamber of Commerce, the building community, different agencies at the province. We've had 10 general project updates. For those that have signed up, you would be continually getting emails from a member of our department, giving you status update when we get to key milestones of the project. We've done three mayor videos, two public info meetings, 14 coffee chat sessions. We had three committee-of-the-whole meetings with council, and as a result of all the feedback that has been received, there were 23 changes that were made to the by law to address the comments that came in from the public. So after the public hearing today, everything is in your local council's hands. Council may direct changes to the by law based on what they hear from the community. Staff will make those changes, then the by law will be brought back for second reading, third reading, and consideration of adoption. So at the conclusion of today, it will be up to council to provide that direction to staff on how to proceed with this by law. Thank you. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. I'm going to go into my statement about public hearings. This public hearing is being convened pursuant to Section 464 of the Local Government Act for the purpose of considering Official Community Plan Amendment Bylaw 2405 and Zoning Rewrite Bylaw Number 2406. At this public hearing, the public will be allowed to make representations to council, and all persons present who believe their interests are affected by the proposed bylaws shall be given the opportunity to address council or to present written submissions respecting matters contained in the proposed by law. Those of you who wish to speak concerning the proposed bylaws should commence your address to council by clearly stating your name and civic address, then you may give us the benefit of your views concerning the proposed by law. Please observe the rules. If you have any concerns with the manner in which this hearing is conducted, direct your comments to myself, the chair. Members of council may, if they wish, ask questions of you following your presentation. However, the main function of council members today is to listen to the views of the public. It is not the function of council at this public hearing to debate the merits of the proposed bylaws with individual citizens. Everyone shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard at this meeting. No one will be or should feel discouraged or prevented from making his or her views heard. In considering the proposed by law, council has received documents which may influence its decision. These documents are available for review in a binder located at the sign-in table or alternatively on the city's website. Before we begin, may I have the corporate officer confirm that all due process was followed according to the Local Government Act? Thank you, Ms. Floyd. A speaker's list has been established, and you may add your name to the list at any time. Each speaker's initial presentation will be limited to three minutes, provided the comments are relevant to the issues at hand and the hearing is not being obstructed. At the 32nd left mark, you will hear a ding, and then you know you are nearing the end of your time. This initial time limit is to allow everyone a fair opportunity to address council respecting the proposed by law amendments. After everyone on the speaker's list has spoken once, speakers will be allowed a supplementary two-minute presentation, which they will be limited to new comments only from what was previously presented, so that everyone that wishes to speak may. Should you wish to provide counsel with new comments, raise your hand, and I will call upon each of the participants until all have had a chance to speak. In your supplementary presentation, please do not repeat the comments made in your initial presentation. After everyone on the speaker's list has had the opportunity to speak twice, speakers will be allowed a third two-minute presentation, which will also be limited to new comments to what was previously presented. Should you wish to provide counsel with new comments, again, raise your hand, and the mayor, myself, will call upon each of the participants until each has had a chance to speak. So I have a speaker's list in front of me. Some of you may have indicated that you do wish to speak, and some of you may have indicated that you do not wish to speak. If any of you were here at this morning's presentation and have spoken, I wish your new comments to be different than what you gave this morning. So I am now going to start this list. I'm going to go through everyone that's on the list. If you wish not to speak, just say no. If you wish to speak, I'm going to call you to the microphone. You can state your name and civic address. So, starting at the top, Leece Morton. Would you like to speak, please? No, thank you. Darren Suchuk, would you like to speak?
Yes, sir.
If you go to the microphone, please, full name and civic address.
My name is Darren Suchuk. I'm at 3025 Camozzi Road. We are part of the Thomas Brooks neighborhood, and the land use designation is Resort Fringe. The proposed zoning, RLD 7, is what we are concerned with. We would like that to be RDL 1. Based on Thomas Brooks neighborhood policies that are stated on the website, Thomas Brooks Neighborhood Action Items, Resort Fringe land use policies, basically, everything in the OCP supports multifamily dwellings and are, under LDR, RLD 7, we are not able to subdivide. So our acre and an eighth lot across the street from the Sutton Place basically is not subdivisible with that type of zoning. So we would have to then go through the whole process of applying for new zoning with a full development plan of layout of all the lots, water use. It's a huge process, just so that we can subdivide our property, which has been our intention all along. In our neighborhood, there are already our LD1, I'm saying it wrong, sorry, RLD 1 zoning for some of the properties there already. Many of the properties that are not, that are currently, will fall under RLD 7. I would go out on a limb and say there isn't going to be any of those properties that won't be subdivided. They all will be subdivided at some point. You don't find acre lots on ski hills, anywhere. So all I'm saying is that if they would make it all zoning 1, not 7, we wouldn't have to go through this huge process of applying for new zoning, going through the whole thing about having an engineer do all of the layouts for what the proposed development would be and lot sizes and all that kind of thing. And basically, it would just save us a ton of work and time of money, and it would save the city a ton of work and a ton of money, because then they have to just approve all these things and change everybody's zoning, which they're going to have to do eventually, because like I said, there's no acre lots on ski hills anywhere. So, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Darren. Catherine Suchuk, would you like to speak? You're good. Dave Dupree, would you like to speak? Please come to the microphone.
My name's Dave Dupree, and I'm at 3014 McKinnis Road. I'm a neighbor of Darren's here. My wife and I came to Revelstoke 25 years ago to heli-ski and just fell in love with the place at that point in time, and we knew that if we ever had steel on the mountain, that we wanted to be here. So 18 years ago, steel was going on the mountain, so we searched for a place to buy here, and we did. We bought one from Tony Johnstone. I don't know if you guys know her. She was a teacher here forever.
Of course.
And we bought her house, and it was time for her to move into town and be closer to services, and she liked us. So now, as we're getting along, and we've been up here 18 years all the time, and now it's time for us to sell and move on as well. We're 18 years older. The OCP desires to have more available and affordable housing. So I was surprised to see us, our property zone is RLD 7 in the draft map, because the minimum lot size for subdivision under RLD 7 is 4,000 square meters, and we're not that big. There's absolutely no way under that that we can subdivide. So, without a property migration into RLD 1. So my question is, why don't we just start there? We're doing this big rewrite, and like Darren was saying, let's just start there, because all those in the fringe are not big properties. There's a lot of benefits to doing that. First of all, we save a lot of money by not having to do the engineering and that sort of stuff, and we get a higher sale price because the zoning risk for the potential buyer has been mitigated, and the basis change would bring in more property tax and revenue to Revelstoke, just on that basis. It'd be less work for staff, because it would already be RLD 1, and RLD 1 aligns better with the OCP than RLD 7 in the fringe area. It's just a better fit. Planning staff would still control the development procedure for access and for lot servicing and subdivision, through the subdivision process. So they're not losing control of it in that way. But most of all, it'd be a faster arrival to market of multiple units, and that would be driving down, that would increase the affordability, because nothing increases affordability like a dramatic increase in supply. So if we can be allowed to do these developments, to do this subdivision under RLD 1, it's going to go faster, and you're going to satisfy the OCP goals for faster, a lot faster, and a lot easier. So, once again, the question is, why don't we just start at RLD 1? It'll be a lot easier for everybody. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Caroline LaChapelle.
Caroline LaChapelle, 1158 Nickel. As the Executive Director of the Revelstoke Chamber of Commerce, I'm standing here today to acknowledge the dozens and dozens and dozens of emails that Director Paul Simon and his team have answered. They are filled with intense questions coming from the business community, and I really want to applaud your response rate, your thorough ability to have come to us multiple times when you didn't have to, to ask to speak to our membership, what does the business community need? For almost two years, you've done outreach with the public in a way that the chamber has never seen in this capacity that we know of from the city of Revelstoke, and it's really great to know that after many years of the public asking for transparency, this type of behavior is now a standard at the city of Revelstoke. We look forward to continuing our conversations. Many people might not know just how many of those conversations are happening in the background between the city and the Chamber of Commerce, and continuing those conversations regarding to the parking strategy, DCC update, downtown revitalization strategy, and of course, property taxes. So thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. Leece Inslee, would you like to speak? Okay, thank you. Pam Doyle, would you like to speak?
Thank you.
Okay. Fern Hickerson, would you like to speak? No. Kathleen Capozzi, would you like to speak?
Thank you.
Okay. Ingrid Boaz, would you like to speak? No. Memory, would you like to speak? Full name and civic address, please.
Hello, my name is Memory Ugleen. I'm at 204 Forest Street East. So we're right in town here, and we get a lot of traffic, a lot of parking. It's getting busier. We are seeing that the demand for parking is going to be an issue moving forward in town, as we get more events, we get busier with tourism. So I haven't read the parking strategy, so I'm a little bit ill-prepared, but I did have some issues about how we're going to move forward with absorbing parking from the commercial downtown areas into our residential area. If you could maybe address that or clarify that issue, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Tina Murch, would you like to speak?
Good evening. Tina Murch, 1755 Emerald Drive. My concern is with the building heights where I live and the restrict, or the increased, or less, what do you call it? The setbacks, the setbacks have been decreased. With Mackenzie Village, I live in a single ranch-style house. It would tower at least four stories over me, what the plan is, and one meter off my property line, which would affect my sunlight, my backyard, my garden, and things like that. So I would like to see property, or building height addressed next to family residential housing affecting sunlight and noise and things like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Melina Murch, would you like to speak? Jack McDonald, would you like to speak? Okay. Arthur Simpson, would you like to speak? Nathan Weston, would you like to speak? Name and full residential address, please, Nathan.
Nathan Weston, 233 Beers Crescent. I don't have any specific comments, because I haven't had as much time to look at it, even though I have communicated with the planning staff multiple times. So overall, I just want to say that I'm happy with the correspondence and glad that Paul and the team have done as much as they have to get this going so it is cleaner. As a builder, it's nice to see things that are easier to read and cleaner. We like that. I would say, just specifically touching on parking, I know we're going to touch on that later, but as many people that have lived in Revelstoke for a long time and those that are aware of snow in Revelstoke, parking will be an issue, so let's not take light of that when we make our decisions on reducing parking for the sake of getting more units. The vehicles are still going to go somewhere, so either we plan for it or we... The vehicles are still going to go somewhere, so either we plan for it or we deal with the mess afterwards. So that'd make a comment for that. But again, thanks to the planning department for doing all that they're doing.
Everett Lindquist, would you like to speak? Thank you. Shannon Boliver, would you like to speak? Come to the, thank you. You can pull that right out, Shannon, if you need to.
It's fine.
You're good.
Shannon Boliver, 908 Second Street West. I just have two things I would like to speak about. One is the heritage area. I'd like to see that the heritage area is preserved and not with the densification, that the, the character and all of the guidelines that we're supposed to be involved with, the heritage area stay. I think the one thing that makes Revelstoke special is our downtown, our heritage houses that we have, and once they're gone, they're gone. We're never going to get those back again. You can build something similar, but it's never going to be the same. Second of all, I'd like to talk, of course, things, thing is parking. I am, be considered to be within a walkable area, and I have two vehicles. I do walk around town, but I still have two vehicles that I need to park. That being said, I have a rental house that's been beside us as long as I can remember, and then we've had different, there's been different tenants there over time. And even though it's a very, very small house, there's been five people at a time living there, all with five vehicles. They all come with a vehicle. So I don't think walkability is a reason to make no consideration for parking, because people are coming with vehicles regardless of how big the units are. And I don't, I'd like to see actually more consideration to parking, especially with our winters and also the clearing of the sidewalks. When we don't have people having places to park, they're parking on the sidewalks, and the sidewalks don't get plowed. It gets dangerous. I saw an old lady trying to walk down there, and it wasn't plowed. So I'd like to see more consideration around the parking and not reducing it, especially before having a comprehensive parking plan for the whole community, not just, say, the commercial areas. But I'd like to see something that would make it work for everybody, because I do know that when we had those five vehicles, yeah, they might move them within 24 hours, but the people down the street just come and park in their place. So it's just kind of swapping like for like, and it still doesn't address how we're going to get the snow removal done in a proper ways. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Michael Hopkins, am I saying that correct?
Yeah.
You don't want to speak? Thank you. Douglas Teigart, do you want to speak? No? All right. Forgive me, I am having a hard time reading. Watt, Ms. Watt, Mr. Watt? No? Sorry. Tammy Watt? Do you want to speak? No? All right. So I have concluded my list of speakers. I'm going to ask if there's anyone that would like to speak a second time, if they would like to raise their hand, and if so, I'll call you to the microphone. Anyone that would like to speak for a second time? And I will call a third time to see if anyone else would like to speak. This will be your last call to speak, if you would like to address council this evening on this public hearing. Seeing no further speakers, I declare this public hearing closed. I want to thank you very much for your submissions. Council members are not allowed to accept any additional information or submissions regarding the topic being discussed. All input must be presented during the hearing itself, ensuring a fair process, which everyone has had the opportunity to be heard. I will now call for a motion to close the public hearing. Counselor Devlin, Counselor Stapenhurst, all in favor? Motion's carried. This public hearing has now concluded. Now, councilors, we have bylaws here on the, in the, in our package. If someone wants to say anything. I have some questions of Mr. Simon. If we want to address some of the issues we've heard today and have staff bring us back some changes, how would you like us to propose that?
To your worship, or through your worship to all of council, I think the most effective way would be for council to come up with individual resolutions that you can put on the table at the subsequent council meeting or whatever time you think is appropriate, and then voting on each individual amendment you would like staff to pursue. And then at the conclusion of that meeting, all the amendments that are voted in the affirmative, staff will go make those changes and bring it back. We're only at first reading right now, so it's a good time to make some necessary changes if council deems it appropriate. So we would then prepare those amendments to the bylaw. We would confirm with the corporate officer that the amendments, as to whether or not they're substantive enough to trigger another public hearing, and if they aren't, then council would be able to do second reading as amended.
All right. Thank you for that. Council, any comments from any of councilors? Counselor Cherry?
Thanks, Mrs. Oles. I have a number of amendments that I'll need about a month to work through with staff before they're presented to council. So I'd like to make a motion, this comes back at the, to council at the end of March.
All right. Is there a seconder for that motion? Counselor Devlin is seconding that motion. Any further discussion on that motion? Some of you may have other things that you would like to bring up. Counselor Palmer?
Could, could we have the motion read back, please?
Sure.
That's going to the bylaw for 2436, come back for consideration of the end of March.
Okay. Do you want to state something?
I'll speak to it briefly. Yeah, I think that's good. Really do thank the public for the input. It's been helpful for me, and I agree with Counselor Cherry that I'll also need some time to sort of marinate on, on some of the comments that were presented this morning and this evening. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments on the motion on the table? Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Note, motion is carried unanimously. Is there any other motions that council would like to make? You're okay with us coming back at the end of the March, as we've just done. If there's nothing else, I will call for termination of the meeting. Counselor Devlin, seconder. Counselor Orlando, did you have your hand up? Yes, Counselor Orlando is seconding. All in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. This meeting is over. Thank you. Thank you all for your time today. We appreciate your input, and we will be discussing with our staff. Thank you.